Okay, so let's stand for the pledge allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God, in the visible liberty of justice for all. Okay, so first up, is there any public comment on agenda items? No? Okay.
Um, I did want to say, would I say after the item, you discuss the item or before you discuss?
So actually, right now, if you have any specific comments on any of the agenda items, you could, I mean, right now would be good to get them.
Okay, I just don't know what's involved, so I really can't comment yet.
You can certainly comment at the end. Okay.
Thank you.
All right, so um, just get the first item that we have on the agenda. We have a resolution introducing and setting the public hearing on proposed local law establishing a six-month moratorium on land use approvals. This includes a copy of the local law. So look, in the past, when the town has made changes to its comprehensive plan, we have put a land use moratorium in place for a period of time. We did that back in 2019. You know, currently undergoing a revisions to the comp plan right now, council advised the town board that we consider doing this. So we have had council draft a land use approval. Now again, this would have to be introduced, public hearing, and then after the public hearing, if the board so, you know, chose, we could put the land use moratorium in place. Do you have anything to add to that, Dominic?
Uh, no, that's exactly correct. You know, I would add that it's intended to be a short-term moratorium. The comprehensive plan committee is already underway. They've already had one public forum and several meetings. I think they just had their third meeting last night. And so that work is progressing and under the leadership of Wayne Gold, that committee is working to move fairly expeditiously through that process. And there are larger-scale projects before the planning board that are still pending. Namely, the tree top application has not been withdrawn. And so as a result, you know, the, that applicant could come back at any time looking to finalize their plans. They've already had their public hearing on their draft environmental impact statement. And the moratorium is designed to give the town the time to really consider what it wants in the near term for the future and adopt any zoning changes that you might see fit as well. It is written specifically to not impact smaller projects. For instance, if someone wants to come in and subdivide their property because they don't want to build an additional home, like that application would not be stopped. Lot line changes would not be stopped. The smaller-scale commercial developments would not be stopped, as well as any project that's previously received approval would be able to commence construction under the moratorium. It is not meant to penalize anything that has approval or has proceeded through the approval process to where they've completed all of their environmental review.
Dominic, what's the town plan? I have to say six months. Is it six months long?
It's six months with the possibility of extending it for two ninety-day periods if necessary.
Two what? Sorry.
Two ninety-day periods.
Okay.
Yeah, but that would have to be something that the town board would have to affirmatively do at that time. So if it's needed, it's there, but as written, it's six months from the adoption.
Yeah, you know, our goal is to get through the comp plan as expeditiously as possible. You know, and I know that, you know, you know, we want to impact as few, you know, projects as possible here. So I definitely think that, you know, Dominic did a good job as far as putting this together to meet those, you know, those goals or whatever. But, you know, again, you know, the comp plan needs space to be able to work and, you know, they want to get this done within six months. May take a little longer, but, you know, this will certainly compel them to get this done because we don't want to, you know, allow this land use moratorium to like hang out there for too long.
That's exactly right. And just to reiterate though, it's like a, you know, smaller-scale projects, like for instance, if someone came and wanted to get a building permit to put a house on the lot that they were purchasing, this would not stop that. You know, this is really focused on the planning board and the planning board considering larger-scale projects to give the town the time to consider what it really wants its future to look like without having competing projects that are, you know, progressing at the same time.
I may be asking.
May I ask a question?
Thank you.
Yeah, so I noticed that the list of exceptions you just summarized some of that. And then the next section is alleviation of extraordinary hardship. Does the section that addresses the extraordinary hardship create an additional exception to the moratorium? Or is that the methodology by which you would ask for an exception?
It is the former. So it, so projects that are exempt in section six, well, it's listed as exception, but it's the sixth section of the law, those projects are automatically exempt. So there's nothing, there's no process that they have to go through. So someone coming in and applying for a lot line change from the planning board because it turns out that their fence is on their neighbor's property and they want to correct that or for whatever reason, any item that falls within those listed exemptions exceptions would be allowed to continue without any further review or approvals. There is the alleviation of extraordinary hardship, which might be a particular applicant that we can't proceed that may have a very time-sensitive issue where they can apply to the town board and it's a town board decision. And they make an application to the town board, the town board would hold a public hearing on that. And then there would, the town board, if it finds that there would be an extraordinary hardship, could grant them a waiver essentially from the moratorium. So that's a second, there's basically two paths to have the moratorium not apply.
Thank you very much.
So this is the equivalent of like a special use permit that someone can apply to the town board? So am I correct?
Yes, state law requires that there is, provide a basically a relief valve for the moratoriums where you consider special circumstances. So there might be someone that just falls outside one of these exceptions, you know, and for whatever reason, they may have a time-sensitive issue where they need to be able to proceed. And so it gives the mechanism for them to be able to do that.
Okay, um, so Dominic, you constructed this local law?
I did.
Were there any, was there anyone else involved, any other consultants or building inspector? Was there any input from those? Because I would think that that should be part of the.
Yes, yes. So since this primarily affects the planning board, I've shared this and discussed this with them, so they're aware.
All right, so with the planning board?
Yes.
And then our building inspector?
Absolutely.
And our consultant. Okay, I'm just asking questions. Interesting.
And in all fairness, the original draft was based on prior moratoriums as a chairman, as supervisor had mentioned. I'm sorry, I'm still in planning board mode sometimes.
Not sure.
Yeah.
I didn't mean to demote you to chairman, but in any event, the original draft was, yeah, came from Mr. Gaba, which I modified for our purposes.
All right. Well, I know you work here, but originally when this was just mentioned at last month's work session, you know, I was kind of blindsided if this was coming up because it was just mentioned. And I spoke with our planning, our building inspector the next day, he even had no, he did not have an idea. And I just want to make sure that if we're going to do this, that like everyone's on the same page. I'm very, you know, I am concerned that if this moratorium is going to be effective and it's going to be.
Yeah, no, understood, but there's a reason for that, you know, because we'd not want to go to those, you know, those people first. We wouldn't want to go to the planning board and the building inspector before we at least raise the issue with the town board because as a courtesy to the town board, since it's a town board function, you know, it was mentioned at the last meeting.
Last week's session.
So that you would be aware that it was coming, but the process that's unfolded since that time are those consultations.
Yeah, and you'll have to forgive me because I was like, this was last night when I'm receiving this, so it's a lot to absorb. So if I'm asking questions, that's the reason.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Of course.
Hey Dominic, I understand somebody fabricated that for an invasion for extraordinary hardship. What are some examples of hardship, extraordinary hardship?
What's that?
What are some examples?
It's hard to think of one, to be quite honest.
It's hard to think of one? So someone could just come and make up anything anymore?
Yeah, I mean, they could come in and say that, you know, that they perhaps like have financing that they would lose, like or grant money that they would lose if they were delayed through the process perhaps. You know, and to be quite honest, the exemptions are written so broadly that it's hard to think of someone that would actually have to apply for the waiver. So like anything that's a type-two action under CECER is automatically exempt. Commercial development, less than 10,000 square feet, you know, so it's even possible that you would get like a quick check, you know, application, which is around 8,000 square feet. So if someone decided to bring a quick check or a Chick-fil-A or something like that on the 9W corridor within the town, that application could proceed. I mean, I would think that that would be in line with what I understand is the town's priorities, which has always been to promote commercial development since the town of Cornwall has so little of it that you didn't really want to stop like that kind of small-scale commercial development from at least going through the approval process. And this doesn't guarantee an approval, it just means that they can proceed.
Okay. All right, so next we have a resolution to introduce the amended local law, scheduled public hearing for commercial audio-visual production. We spoke about this a little bit last time when Steve Gaba was here and what it would look like. I know you've seen the copy of the fee schedule that we're proposing to change. Steve, my understanding, Steve adapted this from, I believe, a version he did in Fishkill across the river. And then the film permit application fees, this is based on what, on what the city of Newburgh does and also a consultation with the OC Film Office and talking to some folks in the industry as well, they've reviewed this. So we've tried to take it from, right now, the way we have it is, it's really not very film-friendly. And, but this allows us more ways to earn income and, you know, from having film productions. And it, you know, sort of in terms of the permit fees. In terms of the actual, you know, process to get a permit, I mean, it's basically broken down into, if you're going to be filming for five days or less and you're not going to be closing down streets or sidewalks or using police or highway, you can just go to the clerk. They have to submit an application within 48 hours. If you are going more than that, or you are, you know, going to need police or road closure or anything serious, then it comes to the town board and you have to give two weeks' notice. So I mean, we're trying to allow the smaller stuff and then the bigger stuff would have to come to the town board. So we're trying to kind of, you know, do it that way. You know, so this way, like if somebody was going to come and ask to close down Main Street for the day or a closed down, I mean, I know we're going to probably hear about what happened that one time with, you know, I get it, it happened.
We've learned, right?
We, well, we learned, I mean, a lot of, well, we did. You know, but I don't think like one incident should sort of like forever mean that we're not going to have filming in Cornwall.
No, I agree with you, but I, well, that's happened, mechanism for the public so that we could say, hey, yes, there's a rush. But how, how do we notify and approve on how we do things? That's all.
Yeah, and I mean, look, the clerk's office is going to be handling that. So this is going to be, they're going to get the application, they're going to handle this whole process. I mean, obviously, they're going to work with, you know, the supervisor's office, the police chief, highway, et cetera, any other public safety, you know, and the town board, they're going to determine if it needs to go to the town board and consultation with, with me. And then obviously, once, you know, there's a production in place, they're going to help work with, you know, to make sure that there's proper notice to people on Main Street and that things are going well. We'll probably even have someone from the clerk's office, if it's a closing Main Street type situation down, we'll probably have someone from the clerk's office collaborate, right? So we've been, you know, talking about this quite a bit.
Yeah, I think we learned from that main street building that, you know, we need to do better.
And we also need to make it more friendly for people to want to come down here.
Oh, yeah, and we're also impacting people's everyday lives and.
Absolutely, absolutely.
All right, so number three, this is the resolution introducing the Hazbrook Drainage Project Check to deem proposed acquisitions by eminent domain, de minimis acquisitions. This will be on for next week, so just sort of, you know, go through this real quick. So we have, we pretty much have all the easements. Some we have prescripted. But just to make sure 100%, that everything is just sort of like, you know, tied up, eyes, you know, Ts crossed, Is dotted, et cetera, to make sure that we cut off, you know, mortgage interest and any other parcels that banks haven't, you know, given that. We need to go through with this. So if you kind of look at all the property owners, we have to basically, we had special counsel Pat Seeley put this together, so you can see, you know, who we have the easements from, who we have prescriptives from, and then who we, you know, we do. And then there's also some people that, you may recall, we got license agreements to go up through the woods to cut down trees. So we have to get easements from them, but we're just going to throw them into this process in order to get them. So basically, this gets filed, you know, after we pass the resolution, this gets filed. You know, in-state Supreme Court, you're going to see all this detail here because you basically have to, in case somebody questions whether it's really de minimis or not, and you don't want to have that happen. You have, so we had to do all of this, you know, detail and backup. So we had the surveyor for the drainage project going out there, getting, you know, you know, onsite condition so you could basically see what it is that we're taking and like what's there. Because you don't want to have a judge come back and say, there's no detail here, there's no. So we basically went and got all the detail that we needed to have here. It's all packaged together and, you know, if the board, you know, when the board adopts this next week, we'll file the paperwork and, you know, hopefully we'll have this, you know, pretty soon. I mean, but it's not, I mean, right now, we do have the easements to continue with, with the project. We just want to make sure that again, everything is like, sort of like buttoned up. So that's the way that, that's the way to do it. So that will be on for next week. Item number four, this is a Windsor EMS new fee schedule, so we just have to adopt this. When we adopted the, when we signed the new contract with them, we had the old 2024 schedule, so we just have to adopt the new schedule of fees for this year. So we just got to make sure we do that. Let's see, five, we have a New York Forward contract, so let me just explain this real quick. So we have, the state's given us two contracts. One contract is Riverlight Park and Cornwall Connector Trail, they wanted to combine those two together. We've worked jointly with the village on the connector trail, the Riverlight Park one is ours, but they're two separate work scopes and schedules, but they wanted to combine contracts. Then we have the branding, marketing, and wayfinding strategy, that's a joint one too, because we're supposed to work with the village on that, that's a separate. So you'll see the scope of work in there. There's just, I mean, there's no changing any of this, like this is, the state was very clear, like this is the boilerplate language, this is what we're awarding the money for, you know, we need you to execute this. Once you execute it, then you start getting into all the details, but we can't really move forward on anything, putting out RFPs for these, you know, retaining project leads, retaining program administrators, any of that stuff until we, you know, sign these, send them back. They want these back by the end of June. Same thing with the village, village is, you know, working on getting theirs back as well. So basically, this is just going to be to have you authorize, be the signees, execute them, and then you'll be seeing RFPs come from Gaba. We have to put out to retain, you know, a project lead, which will most likely be at, you know, different engineering firms. And then once we have those in place, then we can start working on the projects and, you know, defining what those projects are going to be. But we got to put this in place first. So that's, you know, a lot of this, if you look through it, is, most of this is like standard state contracting stuff, which is what the 200 pages is. If you really want to look through, look through like the part where it goes into, you know, work scope, deliverables, all that kind of stuff, which is probably like 14 pages of the 200 actually are the ones that you want to take a look through. So I would ask, you know, I mean, I guess one other thing to point out about this is obviously there is a MWVE component to this that we're going to have to comply with, so there is going to be certain contracting percentages that we're going to have to meet, you know, in the expenditure. I mean, all, you know, all state grants have that now.
Right, so we are responsible for 20%?
Whatever the amount is in here, I forgot the exact amount, it's very specific that you have to. So we'll, you know, one we're procuring for these, we'll have to, you know, send it out to, I mean, we've already pulled, as part of this, we're going to have to go through a list and we're going to have to put down firms that we're going to specifically send this to. We have like an outreach plan and we have to basically send it out to, to local firms, you know, construction firms, materials, supplies, you know, engineering firms, whatever. And so we'll have to get that out and we have to meet those goals. They said there's really very little wiggle room on that, is what they said to me. They basically don't ask.
I'm looking at the contact update form, I know you're one of the contact people, are you the sole or any other? I said, I'm sorry, there's no page from you referred to.
Well, yeah, I mean, it's going to be, it's going to be the signatory, it's going to be, it's going to be Pam and the mayor in the village is going to be on the.
So those one and two?
Yes.
Okay, that's all it's asking?
Yes. Yeah, and then obviously, if any of those ever, you know, change, I mean, because this is like, you know, there is like another two to four years to spend this. I mean, those would have to, we have to submit contract amendments for the responsible parties. Through this here, so.
So this is the one that we funded for, for the way funding, I just did the 400,000?
Well, yeah, one of them is, and we also did.
The two million, that's really, I know, I know that they're trying to merge together in this, right?
Yeah, so we bonded for what we think the full cost of the wayfinding project is going to be. And we're getting reimbursed, I think, 382,000 dollars on that one. And the Riverlight Park one, we did bond for the full amount, but we only intend to borrow for the projects that we do this year that we have grants for. So, I mean, I would expect us to, as far as the Riverlight Park one, I would expect us really to just be bonding for the playground, which is the more.
Okay.
Right, I mean, that's part of the Riverlight Park project. So like the way the Riverlight.
Right, but I was thinking, some of your scoop is this, but that's, that's not part of the.
No, well, those are, the way the New York Forward project worked is, is that you've got, here's a $3 million project. The state's going to give you 800,000 of New York Forward money. If you want to do the rest of these projects, you've got to go out and get other grants. So what we did is when we were developing the, the projects, we got other money. And so we're pretty much two-thirds of the 2 million in projects that we're doing for Riverlight Park is funded entirely by state money. So maybe we had one project left that we are maybe going to do or maybe not going to do based on if we get grants or not. But, you know, two-thirds of the Riverlight Park project is funded by grants.
Right, so we basically have to outlay the funds first by bonding.
Yeah, I mean, that's, that's all, grants, state grants.
I understand.
Peddler's permit here. Is there any other questions on that?
No, you gave me, um, some of those you have to, well, some of them were worth moving to where.
Dave, we've been talking about them, I mean.
No, no, I'm saying when Jen, the clerk, provided me the current ones, there were ones I was not aware.
Okay, so we are on to.
Six.
Sorry, I guess I missed six, sorry. All right, so yeah, six, this is a change where, this is for two FEMA projects, Long Hill Road and Boulevard Road culvert replacements. So this is basically reflecting the amount of engineering costs that are going to go from, so so far, we've, you know, the original amount was for $60,000 to do initial engineering, and then there was additional amounts to the, that have to go on to this engineer agreement. This is for the Boulevard Culvert and for the Long Hill Road Culvert Replacement Projects, these are both FEMA projects. So those will eventually get reimbursed by that when we get the funds in from FEMA. Most of them, most of them have to change local order. So it's going from basically $60,000 to $311,588. But that's, that's all the engineering, that's all with the. So it's going from roughly $60,000, which is what the.
It's written here.
Up to $311,588, which is, I will tell you, is totally in line with what.
You must have it, I don't.
No, it's right here.
No, all mine are blank. Okay, I can check. Mine are blank. There is a copying error. Yeah, I'm sure it is.
Yeah, so basically, this is going to allow us to, to the same agreement that MHE has in place, to charge, this is all the additional engineering and design work that's needed in order to complete the, you know, the two projects for the Boulevard Culvert, right? And for the Long Hill Road Culvert, both which go back to the July 9th storm.
FEMA.
Yeah.
Reversable.
Yes.
Thank you. No, I, it's just missing.
Seven, we have the peddler's permit fee. The clerk's office would like to change some of the fees that have not been changed in a long time. Do you have anything you want to say about that, Jeff?
Yeah, I just think that after looking at other municipalities, we should really up the fees a little bit, you know? I think it's, you know, it's reasonable there.
Just up one?
Well, the one day, yeah. So right now, it's $100 for the month, and then you can redo it for five months, $25 a month. So we'd like to up, yeah, we'd like to up the one month, we'd like to, you know, pretty much double it, except for the week. We don't really ever get a week, we usually get a month, and then sometimes they come back a couple times. We've got the fish guy that comes, you know, except for during farmer's market season. He's here all year except for the farmer's market season, so, yeah.
People like him.
Yeah, so.
Okay, all right, so that's, that's that. Next, we have senior bus policy, this has just kind of been resolved. I mean, look, basically, it's just a question of, you know, Virginia and I spoke about this, so I think it's just a matter of we've kind of worked, we've worked through it, making sure that, you know, that the bus driver is, you know, driving the bus and, you know, that she's not, you know, becoming essentially like a, you know, like a, you know, like a health aide worker and driving the bus at the same time. And so we just got to make sure that, that, you know, our lovely seniors who, you know, take the bus and that, you know, they understand that, you know, the bus driver's there to drive the bus and she'll do the best that she can, but she's not there to do other things. And so it's just a matter of, we just have to educate, you know, people that are riding the bus and make sure they understand that. And, you know, I don't know that, you know, at one point, I thought maybe it should be like an official, you know, policy, that we be, an official written policy, but I don't, you know, I don't know if it's gotten to that, so I think we can just sort of.
Is that necessary?
No, I don't think it, but it was, it was, it was an email from a department head and so I ended up, you know, oh, I think we've resolved it, so. Unless it comes up repeatedly or again and again, I think we can just kind of leave it where it's.
I thought it was more about usage of the bus.
No.
So it was about carrying packages on and off the bus. And some people assumed the driver, it was going to do that, and we resolved it.
Yeah. So, okay, so next, we have the 2025 New York State Consolidated Funding Application. This comes out every year, it's. This comes out every year, it's due July 31st and we do have some different grant opportunities on here. We're gonna be talking about some of them later this week. Some of them are, you know, we have the Water Quality Improvement Program, that's a Wquip program. And in the past, we've applied for a new salt barn. We went out and awarded that, but I think we kinda have an idea of like what maybe changes we'd have to make to get that. Hydrovac truck, that was a joint application with the village and the town. We were not successful, but I will tell you, it would be very nice to have a hydrovac truck because there's lots of stuff you can do with it that I'm learning as we go through this drainage project. You know, there is, you can apply for a multi-site drainage infrastructure project. I was, you know, I was looking around the state to see what got awarded and it seems like if you can find multiple sites and tie them together and they, you know, impact like maybe one or two watersheds, so for, you know, so for instance, like you could maybe do a, you could do Rings Pond, Weeks Avenue Drainage and Confidential Road Drainage, tie them into one application because they both feed the same creek. Maybe that would be a more competitive application, right? So, that's something that we're gonna take a look at. You've got the Green Resiliency Grant due August 15th. I would imagine if we go for that, that would probably be the Rings Pond, you know, Weeks Avenue, Riverlight Park Drainage, same type of... Then we have, you know, and again, this would maybe help us next year when we get into the zoning. We, we could see if we can get some money to do from either Department of State or Empire State Development to help pay for zoning tied to the comp plan. So, those are coming up, those are doing the 31st as well. We have the Parks Grant, another one. We, we last applied for the Municipal Parks and Rec Grant, that was a couple months ago. We did that for Royal Crest. There is the Parks Grant that we've been applying for each year when it's come out for Riverlight Park. And then we get into these other grants that, you know, next year, I imagine they'll be part of the CFA, but this year, they're not gonna probably be out until August or September. Those would be the New York Playground, which is new. That funds new playgrounds and, you know, that type of equipment. That could be a really good Royal Crest application for a new playground. You got New York Bricks, which funds community centers' construction. We don't have all the details, but, I mean, right off the bat, I'm thinking like, that's like a Mugga Cottage application, right? So, I think when that comes out, we're immediately gonna wanna look into, you know... And then you got New York Swims, which is also coming out. They did a round two, hopefully it's gonna be more than just like the big cities that are eligible, you know, the cities in the, you know, certain types of communities. I'm hoping that round two of Swim New York will allow us to maybe apply for the, for our pool replacement, that would be nice. So, these are all coming out, I think we just kinda have to go, you know, through each one. Certainly, if you have, you know, you know, ideas, I mean, you know, Virginia certainly and, you know, Rocha, I think certainly on the Bricks Grant, that's gonna be Mugga Cottage. Unless you can figure out something else. And then obviously on the others, we've got drainage, right? Which, you know, we've got salt barn, drainage, hydrovac. You know, we gotta decide what do we think we're most likely to be able to win.
Gotta be drainage with all these rain stories.
So, you know, I'm sort of looking that we can maybe come up with a winning formula on one of these drainage grants here.
Where is the salt storage at? 32?
Yeah. So, I mean, part of me was like, you know what, maybe, but since we are gonna be redesigning the complex, it's like, do we really wanna go buy a salt storage barn and we don't know like where it's gonna go? I mean, I guess leave that up to you if you think that it's worth trying to...
Oh, we can maybe time it to where we use the grant money at the construction of the new garage.
Yeah, you know what, maybe, maybe they, so we should definitely, when we talk to David Jenkins about that, we should sort of see what he has to, has to say about that. But, yeah, I mean, certainly if you have, you know, ideas, please send them my way. And I know when we're working on Mugga Cottage, that we're gonna be, we're gonna have to get our group together again, Virginia, to start talking about that and, you know, Rocha, because we've gotta, we're gonna have to be ready to submit an application for Bricks.
Okay, sounds good.
Okay, so, I spoke about 10-2. There's this other one here, which is, I'm trying to figure out how to, you know, how to go for this one, but there is the Economic Development Administration FY25 Disaster Supplemental. Our engineering firm forwarded this to us and basically because we have the July 9th storm, it puts us into being eligible to apply to the Disaster Supplemental Grant Program. And so, I'm not just thinking like readiness here, I'm, I'm thinking, you know, let's like, like really find a really like catalytic project here that can do a bunch of things, whether it's, you know, doing all the infrastructure, water main and sewer upgrades that are needed for like, you know, going down Academy, going down Main, doing drainage and like, you know, we should apply for like, you know, like, like, you know, $20 million or something if we can like, you know, come up with the right, the right projects. So, I think this is, and it's due next March, so we have time. You know, the Hudson Valley Regional Council, which is led by the Chair of our Conservation Advisory Committee, she actually works and submits these types of grants and I think that's gonna be a discussion we're gonna have and maybe we can come up with like a multi, multi-site, even a multi-municipality. Maybe we see if like Town of Islands wants to get in on this since they were affected on the other side of the mountain. Let's ask for 50 million, you know? I mean, let's, let's, let's really, you know, see if we can get a, you know, project that helps both sides of the mountain. So, this is gonna be something that I'm gonna try to see if we can get together. I'm gonna have a preliminary discussion with Carla, see if this is something she wants to take on. Once we get past that, then it's gonna be, we're gonna have to figure out how to get this together, but I think it's a real opportunity and then, you know...
So, application deadline is March?
March, yeah. So, if you're gonna go with the industry transformation path, now, that's due in March. The rest of them are like rolling submission, but like the key to this, and Carla, I was talking to Carla about this, she said, look, she's like, if you go for these bigger ones, it's about jobs or it's about, you know, doing infrastructure that will unlock the ability to create jobs. So, it's gonna have to be like, all right, so we're gonna redo the water main and it's gonna allow, you know, NEMA to, you know, redo its campus and, you know, grow its campus, right? Which will create jobs, which will do, or we're gonna do, and it's also gonna have to be like tied into doing, you know, drainage improvements to help in Riverlight Park. So, it's gonna have to be like multifaceted and, you know, I could see if I was over in, you know, Highland Falls for Montgomery and they were hit, you know, much worse than us, I mean, they're gonna, you know, like, you know, maybe they get this and they look at ways to create jobs in their downtown, right? So, it's like a multi, multi-site, multi-municipality application. So, you know, once I get a little bit further, you know, further along with this, you know, and we can talk more about this offline if you have ideas for like how to, you know, put this together. So, that's that one. I do have an EV charging station update, which is, I would say, 85% good. So, basically, the, I've been working with Real Term Energy on this and basically, we're now working with the Volt, Voltie E Group that has new firmware to operate the charging stations. And so, that firmware is replacing what NLX had on the charging stations. And so, last week, Real Term Energy got in touch with me and then on Monday, we had a bit, sorry, maybe I'm getting this wrong, but Tommy, what day did we have Windsor IT first come out? Was that just...
Friday.
Friday, yeah, so they did it on Friday. They did it on Friday, they came out, 'cause you basically had to like bring a laptop out and you had to basically like manually update each one, like reset them and, you know, do all of this. So, we did that, but now we have this issue where it seems like maybe our, what, firewalls are somehow blocking, you know, their backend from communicating with our stations. So, you know, the Windsor IT is working with, you know, Real Term and Voltie E to kind of work through that firewall issue, but, I mean, I don't have any doubt we're gonna solve it, but it's just, it's actually better because we're not gonna have to end up right now, you know, getting any additional hardware. It's just gonna be switching out the firmware for the charging stations. So, you know, with any luck, in Voltie E Group, they've taken over for the, you know, providing support to all of the customers who have NLX stations when they left the North American market. And there's gonna be an app real soon that's coming out, so, I mean, overall, I think we'll get this solved in, you know, a week or so, but thankfully Windsor IT is helping us with this because, you know, it's like very technical, you know, they're like, they're like, here's a page of like, you know, foreign language that you have to, you know, reprogram the station with. So, thankfully, you know, they're helping us and I would expect us to get this, this back online soon. But, that's why I said 85% good there. All right, next we have the USDA NRCS Buyout Program. So, this is really just an update. I know I've, you know, spoken to some of you about this. So, basically, we've ordered titles, the engineering firm's working on environmentals of the six properties. We have to, and actually later, later on, we're gonna have to retain a, a third-party appraiser to evaluate the six appraisals that were done, fill out the USDA form and verify that they were done correctly, which is part of the USDA process you have to do.
Right, so we've already paid for appraisers?
We did, but we have to pay for a third-party review.
So, we pay for another person?
No, they're just gonna, they're gonna just review the appraisals and say that those appraisals were done correctly and then they're gonna sign off on the USDA form. All of this though...
Those appraisals aren't guaranteed to look what they're doing, but they're paying them to do? Or is that just in the USDA regulations?
This is like government regulations, they...
They're regressing us for this?
Yes, for all of this administrative work, yes.
Okay, thank you. All right, I get it.
Yeah, so anyway, so we've got the title, we've got the environmental, we've got the appraisal review, all that comes back. Town Board and Steve Gava, Dominic, you know, we look through it, we see if there's any issues in any of this stuff, like, you know, did the environmental identify there is like a, you know, toxic waste on one of the properties and that's gonna make it so we don't wanna, you know, buy it, et cetera, you know, like stuff like that. And then, you know, we then send it to the USDA, they look at it, they come back, they say, all right, everything's in order here, you guys can, you know, go to the next step. And the next step at that point is basically deciding, you know, if and how much. And then, you know, once, you know, that happens, if the town board goes down that path, then there's a whole bunch of other steps that don't involve the person, the property owners, then it becomes like, all right, well, we bought them down, now we gotta raise them, we've gotta, you know, get rid of the, you know, the, you know, demo material and then we have to restore the property to, you know, a vegetated state. But, I mean, right now, we're on the step before, you know, we're basically on the step before the town board's gonna have to make a decision, right? I mean, we've gotta get all the details reviewed, send it to the USDA and then they'll come back and say, all right, you're good to go. And so, my goal would be to have that, I think by, by the end of June, we should have all of this data, you know, we'll get it to the USDA, let them review it over the month of July and then we'll get back and then August, September, we'll decide. I think is sort of the way to go on that. Now, we have vehicle and traffic law discussion, so this is just real quick, I mean, it's really simple. When you go over on the corner of Willow and Main Street, you know, where you have that old nasty sidewalk that runs along the building there? Right? And it's like a no standing zone, right? So, one of the things that we're proposing to do, Tommy and I have been out there a couple times with folks from the county. And basically, it's a county road. What we're proposing to do is basically bust up that old sidewalk that's right there that really doesn't go anywhere, right? Pull it up and then we would pave over and we would put in three to five parking spots right in that area going right down the side there. It would require us to, right now, it's no standing.
No parking?
Yeah, no parking yet.
No parking?
Yeah. So, we would have to basically make an amendment to the, you know, Vehicle and Traffic Law to allow for those parking spots. But that would basically allow parking spots going down the side there and, you know, that would make it so that people that are accessing that building and that area would have an additional like three to five spots, you know, right there. And I think it would just be more, more beneficial, we could do the work where we can, you know, pretty much, you know... And then on the other side of the street, and I think we had said, you have some money in your sidewalk fund, possibly? On the other side of the street, you know that section that basically goes, you know, past Brian's bike on the corner, that last dead section of sidewalk to connect to the nicer new sidewalk that kind of runs up, you know, Willow right there? So, we think at the same time that we would be able to have that done and the other side done, you know, by whoever's doing the sidewalk on the other side. So, that's, you know, something we're looking at, the county has asked us to, we gotta fill the permit out, right, permit application?
Yeah, pretty much all.
And then make an amendment to the VNT.
So, the town is going to do work on the permit?
No, we own the sidewalk.
You own the sidewalk? I was just asking...
Yeah, so...
Yep, it's, it's our responsibility, we strike it.
Okay.
When is this happening?
We're responsible for the side.
Summer, early fall.
Okay.
Any time, time?
I just asked, I just asked.
I mean, it's, it's really more like two to three parking spots at most. It, it, a third would be depending on...
Not a standard, but most of the time.
If we can move...
Central Hudson.
I don't...
No idea, yeah.
No moving parts to this?
Very preliminary.
I'm, yeah, I mean, I think, I think once we, really at Central Hudson and then, but we're, you know, we're gonna be putting the application in, we'll have the engineer, you know, draw it up, if we have to do that, I don't know if that's necessary.
It's not a lot of work, I mean, it's a couple days worth of work, so we get our ducks in and it's nothing we couldn't do late summer, early fall.
And is that business, that they've submitted an application to the planning board yet?
I don't follow that.
They don't have to. No. The deli?
Yeah, mine are.
Because they're not, unless they're changing use of the site, I don't know that's anything we have to, you know, to go in from like children, 2,000...
They're in the building.
So, we're creating, are we basically, I don't mean to, I mean, please don't take this, so we're basically trying to create three parking spots to help this, this particular property, is that what we're doing?
No, I would say that we're trying to...
I'm just trying to understand what...
I would say we're trying to create parking spots to help that whole, you know, so you have, you have a potential deli, you have all building, I mean, you have in that, inside of that building, you can have additional businesses because you're starting to turn over. You've got Primas, I'm constantly getting calls from Anthony about creating additional parking spots right in that area and we have...
We have to.
I'm just telling you, we're constantly getting calls from, you know, the, the restaurant owners right there in that area about any additional parking spots. We also have the Lemon Building too, that's for sale, that's eventually gonna become something.
I think you see the spots get used just 'cause people won't have to get on Main Street to park, they'll come down Willow.
Or they may have all those members of the parking center, they will be parking to the left, right? And our parking center will be paid for. I'm not trying to be against this, but like we have all these parking studies and we tell people, there's no parking problem and now we're, we're making parking spots. So, I'm just trying to understand what we are doing.
We're trying, we're trying to put parking spots closer to the business.
The sidewalk really has to go, it's a danger.
Okay.
It's past its useful life, it's uneven, it's heaved, so it's a lot cheaper to put in asphalt than concrete.
Okay, okay.
You know?
Yeah, but this guy came out of like a safety discussion that led to, what are we gonna replace it with? The sidewalk goes, doesn't go anywhere. So, if we're gonna take the sidewalk off, we're not gonna replace it, so let's just, you know, why not add two spots?
It essentially stops at that entrance to where CJM and all those businesses are down there.
Yeah, because there's the driveway that's at the back and there's parking back there and some of it's for the apartment.
But that side, both sides of the sidewalk.
But there is parking back there and some of it...
That person actually owns that property?
Yeah.
And I believe that, my understanding, they should make that parking back there.
Yeah, there's gonna be parking there, yeah. There is stuff back there.
That's where it's standing.
All right, well, thanks for...
Yeah, I mean, in terms of the, you know, site plan, et cetera, you know, unless they're changing how they're accessing, you know, I mean, I've been in there with Gary into the space, they've gutted it and, you know, it's really gonna be, you know, yeah, I guess that's a decision for the building inspector, if he feels that it's gonna have to, he'll have to review the use and then, I mean, obviously, if they're gonna change like how they're gonna intend to access the site or if they're gonna do anything else, then, yeah, I guess I could see it having to go to the, you know, planning board, but, you know, Gary will determine that. All right, so, that's vehicle and traffic law discussion, microphones in the showroom. Tim, you got anything to say about that?
The only thing I could say is that I was only able to get two quotes on the mics that happened there in front of you and it made a difference. I checked with New Windsor IT and they don't do it, as a matter of fact, they were looking for some to, to do their station and to do their courthouse, just what we wanna do. So, I gave you some information.
And what is the purpose of this exactly? And what is the purpose of this, exactly?
The microphones for the speaker system, so that people in the audience can actually hear us.
Have, have anybody complained that they didn't-
Many.
Yes, many.
Many, like, many, like, ninety percent of the people in the audience, maybe more.
Oh, really?
And not only that, but it won't just be for us, but it also is for the planning board, the zoning board, anybody who uses this room to court themselves.
Use that room?
Not just for the, the town board, it's for all people that use this room, and, and use it for meetings. And, and, yeah, there has been numerous complaints over that, especially this year, but, or last year also, and probably before that, but this year definitely.
So the, the audience have complained?
Yes.
Excuse me?
The audience, the residents have complained?
Many, yes.
Well, I think what we were asking for clarification is, are you saying the people that are physically sitting in the room?
Yes.
Okay, I think that's her question.
And that, and that, can I answer that? And that's, that's, I think, there's just many.
I wasn't sure whether it also online, and it's a tax.
Yeah, I, I would imagine online, too, nobody's seen it online.
People online.
The last time we had this discussion-
Yes.
And we walked up, it was, it was like, why, people in the audience than it is today, and, uh, I, I, about ninety-nine percent of them came up to me and said, "Thank you."
Yeah. All in to support the ideas.
It's a, it's a, 'cause they had it before in the past, you know, just about four or five years ago, they kind of like, lost their power, or after they broke down, or whatever happened, they were battery-operated, and stuff, so.
I also think because we changed to, um, a whole idea of Facebook, like, the Facebook and Zoom meetings, I think that also changed how we do things. So we have to figure out how we-
I know when I was talking to John McDonald on New Windsor IT-
Yeah.
He was telling me that New Windsor's town boards had the same issue-
Yeah.
And that they wanna do for their people also, just, they get numerous complaints, also, the audience as well, it's people, you know, on, on home and, and, uh, social media.
Thank you, Tim, for, you know, yeah, I know you want to make this.
But as you see, the two quotes are, are quite drastic, and, and reason-wise, 'cause the one of, uh, you know, individuals feels they can use some of the equipment that we already have here in, in this building, and, you know, in the courtroom, that would save us from nothing but two thousand dollars.
All right, so, so we're gonna, like, get together and just choose one, Tim, and-
Yeah.
Bring it to the board?
Yeah.
Okay. There.
I mean, I think with the procurement policy, I'm not sure if Dominic is familiar, but I would think if you're trying to get any kind of prices or bids, and I know usually you have, you have to find three.
Correct, and that's what I do.
And-
Yes, yeah.
And now, really, we're at, right two, I believe there's exceptions, if you can't, there aren't any other bidders, and you, you can actually pick two.
Yeah, I've been working on this for about, going on month three, and I spoke to Mr. Gava on this, and he said the same thing that you just mentioned, that, uh, and, and trust me, I was, I was shocked when I went to New Windsor IT, and they said, "Tim, I'm looking for somebody, we have connections."
I think they're all dealing with the same problem.
Yeah, you know, so, and I said, yeah, I, I reached out to, you know, these two individuals here, not to them, anybody else, you know, 'cause I, I told them I needed the three quotes-
Right.
And it's very sparse. Just at least.
Okay, item sixteen.
Okay, item sixteen, highway department surplus equipment. Tom, do you have anything you wanna say about this?
Just gotta go, leave it away.
Okay.
So is this the only surplus equipment we have? I mean, I know, do, do we have any other vehicles that, you mean, we have surplus?
I surplused, um, a handful last year of our replacement, and I surplused, that's the rest of what didn't go last year, and some of it's being replaced this year, like the loader, it's broken, so there's really no place, reason to hold on to it right now.
Okay. I know that this is a separate item, but are we surplused any, do we need to surplus any?
We will, next month.
Okay.
One.
Just cleaning out the closet?
Yeah. Well, we got a-
Right, and then you, the surplus-
An engine failure, so it's, it's gone.
Right, it's gone, okay.
Are they just on the same lot?
No, 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 no. Something doesn't matter.
They have to go separate.
Don't run one, uh, auction or wander, I'm just asking.
Okay.
All right, we, next we have the recreation department, summer staff, so, um-
Yes, all right.
So we, you know, look, we saw the waiting pool open, you have to have two lifeguards on per, that's the minimum staffing requirement, so in order to be able to staff two lifeguards every day, to account for staff that are gonna call out, or gonna go on vacation, et cetera, so we're talking of-
So not all on at the same time, so they'll be-
No, no, it's only two, it's only two people on, at a time.
Right, and then, if I'm, I'm sorry-
Yeah.
It's also like, there can only be a certain amount of time watching, like, I think probably you have to take a break in between, I know.
Yeah, so that, that fits into like, the, you know, like, the schedule, so you gotta have enough people to, to do that. So look, I know even though we have this small little waiting pool, which is gonna probably be really busy this summer now, because of the, you know, we have to-
It warms up.
Yeah. So there's, yeah, there's nine that, um, Phyllis wants to hire, and, you know, that, there, uh, you know, obviously, we'll have to, you know, like, for instance, like, the other day, when it rained, we didn't open it, so, you know, and it's really bad weather and kind of weather, um, you know, we won't open, bring staff in, but obviously, you know, on most states, we'll have it open.
I think we've only opened Sunday so far, we were closed Saturday, Monday, Tuesday.
Yeah.
We're not hiring as many lifeguards like last year since-
We had the whole pool, right, so we had the whole pool, so-
Yeah, I'm saying that we're not gonna hire-
No.
Too many lifeguards.
No, some of those other lifeguards ended up going down to, as well, some of our camp staff ended up going down to Camp Homestead. So they were, they were hired, they're gonna-
They're hired by Camp Homestead, okay. Um, and then you have a few camps, those?
Yep, that's still happening.
Yeah, the director. The season starts, I'm guessing, in the first week of July all the way to third week of August? I have to check this.
I think it's the second week of July, I'm sure.
Yeah.
I think it's the week after July, Paul.
Wait, right, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, you're probably thinking, Camp Homestead starts, you know, earlier, that's June thirtieth, you know, normally, you know, that would start July, so July fourth.
Oh, it goes until the eighth? It goes until August eighth, six thirty of August eighth.
Six weeks, right?
Yeah.
And then here are the rates that we have, um, they've only been, you know, increased a little bit, but it's mostly to account for, you know, knowing wage and trying to keep, you know, uh, on track with the other municipalities.
Good directors.
So, well, yeah, so obviously, we're not hiring a summer playground director, we're not hiring a summer playground assistant director, um-
Yeah, just looking at those expenses.
Obviously, we have to do kinder camp, kinder camp director, we have to have a camp health director, and then we have to have the, you know, lifeguard, uh, lifeguards, and, you know, we're not doing swimming lessons, so, you know, obviously, this, these are the rates, but you can see where it says, like, "Not applicable," because we're not hiring based on-
Right, for twenty, twenty five.
Yeah, so look at the twenty, twenty five. Yeah.
So, so how does, the director works directly with Laura?
Yeah.
Okay.
Which is Laura, then, you know, Phyllis deals with the lifeguards, she's the pool director.
Okay.
Um, okay, that's summer staff, uh, the assessor's office, she's asking if she's gonna attend this Cornell seminar, um-
On the Thursday?
Yep. So we have that, um-
Just out of curiosity, how many trainings, are there, are there any, uh, rules and regulations, how many trainings, um, employees can take per year, or no, there's no?
I mean, really, many is, or function of it.
Well, I think-
There's also what they have to take, too, to maintain service.
Yeah, no, there are some mandatory ones, and there are some, uh, you know, that she's left upon.
Yeah, I mean, there's-
This was actually with the New York State Assessors Association, so this is where-
Yeah, she's, she's gotta, Kitty has to take these, you know.
This one, I'm, I'm, she has to go, sorry.
I was just, gentlemen speak, uh, gentlemen, questions, so.
No, no, is this, what, or, is this, this is-
It's for Kitty.
This is, yeah, this is for Kitty, uh, I have to correct.
Yeah, she, she's gotta take these, um, she's-
She has a scholarship, so.
So, but yeah, I mean, generally, Brooklyn, just speaking in terms of trainings, I mean, it's mostly the department, it's, it's the building department, assessor's office, um, you know, and then obviously, all the departments have certain trainings they have to take, everyone's gotta take sexual harassment, and-
I was just asking about the frequency of the-
Oh, yeah, no, it's, it's- Special events permit, so this is the Storm King Run that we have, um, this would be, uh, you know, proposed for August twenty-fourth. You can see when this, this would basically be the New York two eighteen, between the ski slope and the overlook. So obviously, they're, they're gonna have to, you know, provide insurance and provide all that. Have they done that yet, insurance, you know?
Yeah.
They're probably sorry, you, should be up.
Yep, okay.
Is it gonna have a motorcycle, right?
No, no, it's a different, it's a different. Then we have the liquor license request, um, applying for Toon Style Inc., we tried to look-
I was just saying.
We, we were trying to find this, because, you know, this comes up, and so, um, you know, I'm, I know, you know, I know the DG market, but, um, but they're not coming for an on-premise liquor license, unless there's on-premise retail, and that's what this is, because I know they're not gonna be able to sell beer there. And I was talking to the plaza owner about this, and he wasn't necessarily aware of any, you know, uh, places in that establishment that were, you know, were applying for it, so-
Jamaican place?
I was just gonna say-
Well, that's, that, you know, maybe they didn't tell him, um, but, uh-
That, that's what it was.
That's, that's, that's what I was thinking, 'cause I was trying to figure out, I was like, wait, they're gonna offer, like, have an on-premise, you know, license there, I was just trying to figure out how I was gonna work my head, and so, maybe that's why I put these two to the table.
I don't know for the owner, I don't know, of the property?
They, they would, they would have to sign off on the overall application, but in terms of the community notification, um, they don't have to-
Oh, right, right.
Property owner doesn't have to sign off on the community notification, but they do on the, um-
Tell the, tell the property-
Landlord, uh, there's a section on the onsite, on-premise liquor application for the landlord. So anyway, I mean, I'm, you know, I'm not particularly, uh, you know, they haven't asked for us to waive it, so-
It's the jerk house.
So, so unless there's any, um, you know, it, you know, issues that the board would have, um, I would just say, we just let this go the thirty days.
It is the jerk house.
Yeah. We just let it go the thirty days, and then-
It's the, uh, the jerk house that's-
Okay. Yeah. You know what I, you know, I wonder what they're probably doing, um, they do catering, so if you wanna do, if you wanna do off-premise catering and have liquor, you need to have an on-premise license. So-
All right.
They may not ever intend to make, like, mixed drinks and sell them there, but if they wanna do that at a wedding, for catering, they would have to have an on-premise. New York State has like, kind of funky, you know-
Oh, this is on-premise liquor license?
Well, yeah, so, so if you wanna, um, be a caterer, and cater weddings in a tent in the field, you have to have an on-premise license somewhere, so it's, but anyway, that, that's, um-
At least we know where it's coming from.
Okay, so, we've got-
Community pool.
Community pool survey, okay. So, on the, uh, comp plan had over six hundred survey responses, and I forgot the exact number, but I, I know according to Jason, he said that's like, what, ninety-five percent, um, you know, accurate when you have more than six hundred. We wanted a thousand, we didn't get to a thousand, but we got, I think somewhere between six and seven. Um, so that, um, he'll be, uh, right now, he's kind of like, compiling all the results, he's gonna put it into like, a summary, give it to the board, obviously, it's for the comp plan committee, and we'll get it out to the public, 'cause they're very interested, and, like, I could just sort of say, and really, it's no surprise. I mean, the number one, you know, priority is parks, rec, land preservation, open space. Number two, number two, one of the things that's been coming up, and this really shouldn't be a surprise, is like, the idea of that it's like, really expensive to live in Cornwall, and so attainable housing was, kept coming up, which means that like, you know, essentially, you know, like attainable housing, senior housing, so that came up, and so what that tells me is that, you know, you know, not everyone can afford a half a million dollar house, and, you know, there's probably not enough apartments or options for seniors to downsize into, I think that's reflecting a lot of that. But obviously, we'll have to get into that when, when the comp plan starts doing its work, and we start hearing from the public, you know, but just, I mean, in general, it was open space, parks, preservation, and, um, attainable housing. But again, I, I don't think it's any of a surprise, on any of those fronts. Um, in terms of, uh, the public pool survey, so, you know, we had a meeting a couple weeks ago, um, with the pool engineer, like, I, I guess I would say our, our pool team, and the engineer had basically advised us to, you know, we're gonna come up with, uh, you know, obviously, there's the, we're not gonna replace the pool, it's gonna be demolished, there's the, there's the repairs, and we're gonna come up with what those costs are, um, but in order for us to come up with the options, like, the other options of what the public wants, the engineer said, "You really gotta put a survey out." So we created a survey, and it's gonna basically, um, you have it in your package, and what I would say is that the goal here is to basically, um, I mean, look, we just get right to, right? So like, if you don't wanna have a pool, if you don't want us to replace it, well, then say no, and you're not taking the rest of the survey, 'cause we know your response, right? So, we wanna see how many noes we get here, let's see how many noes to yeses we get, right? Um, and so basically, you know, you've got this, it's like, where do you live, right? 'Cause obviously, like, if you don't live in Cornwall, um, or within, I guess, like, even the school district, like, then really, it doesn't matter, because we're, you know, this is geared towards Cornwall residents. Um, you know, you're gonna go through it, you know, do you want a pool? No, okay, yes, then you go on, and then it's gonna be questions like, you know, do you want like, a zero-entry, uh, beach-type style pool? Do you want a barbecue in picnic area? Do you want, do you want slides? Do you want other pool amenities? Do you want, um, swimming lanes, you can swim laps? It's kind of just like, and the pool engineer basically told us what questions we should ask, 'cause once we get the answers, that'll dictate how big the pool area has to be, how big of a pool we have to have, you know. If we don't get a lot of people saying they wanna swim laps, well, then maybe you're only gonna have like, two laps versus like, four. Um, and then, once we get that, then he'll be able to come up with the different, you know, designs, um, so we'll have the, obviously, we're gonna have the no pool, demolish it option, we're gonna have the repair option, and we're gonna have, you know, I, I would say up to two replacement options. But we gotta get through this first. We're gonna keep it open through July sixth, 'cause I think we'll get a lot of responses, you know, through the July fourth weekend, so, I mean, look, you know, I know people are probably watching this, you know, please go on the town's website, go on the Facebook page, just like the comp plan, please take the pool survey, we really need to know, um, your feeling on this, 'cause it would be a really big investment if we decide to go down that road, so please take it, we really need your feedback. Um, once we get it, then we'll, you know, give the results to the board, and we'll get back on the, you know, the path of getting our, um, you know, options for the public. Because really, I think at this stage, as far as the pool's concerned, Because really, I think at this stage, as far as the pool's concerned is, like, the next thing is probably a public meeting with the options for the public. I would think that that's the next step. Muggler Cottage is probably a few more steps before we have options, but I think the pool is really, at this point, you know, do the survey, then we get the options, and then we have a public meeting. Muggler Cottage is a little, I think, a few more steps, but, um, so I would, I would certainly, please, you know, tell people to take this. Um, let's see. Items received after, after the final publication, um, this'll be on for next week, this literally did just come in, you know, um, Mike Lamro was, you know, on a plane flying back from Florida today, and this is around the Hazbuck Drainage Project, so we couldn't actually get this to me earlier than when he got it to me. So, uh, we are gonna have on here, oh, actually, I gotta give this to you, I'm gonna, 'cause you're like, what the hell is this talking about? Um, so let me get this to you. This is the change order. Um, let's see, change order number one and two. I'll go through with that a little bit. Um, I'll just pass this to you. Pass this down. Okay, so, basically, the first change order, um, has to do with, um, this was over by, uh, there was some, uh, infrastructure that had to be moved, um, over on, uh, Central Hudson, um, infrastructure had to be moved, and we had to bring in a hydro vac truck in order to, to be able to do some of that, and so they basically had to blast a 50-foot long trench, five foot deep, four feet wide with a hydro vac truck. Um, we had to do this, this was over by, um, this was what, part of the backyard stretch of work over on Clinton, right? Um, that was over by the Purcell's property over there. And so, what we're finding obviously here is that, um, when we're, and this is just gonna happen like throughout this whole project, right? So, like, as we're digging, well, this is in the way, or that's in the way, the utility is not gonna move this, or this wasn't marked out properly by, you know, whoever, or this issue or that issue, so in this case, in order to be able to proceed down the backyard path going from Clinton, once we got through the first couple of, uh, you know, the Lloyds and the Soviets, um, you know, you cross Clinton, then you're going up through the backyards, and between Vanderpool's old house and the Purcell's, going all the way back up, we had to get this out of the way in order for us to be able to proceed. So this is, this will be a change order for roughly $14,697. Lamro, you know, look, he's now the, you know, the engineering firm's managing director, he's now at, you know, we have weekly construction meetings for this, every week we meet, um, Tim goes to them as well, um, and so we, you know, we meet to go over all this stuff, so this was one that we had to do in order to, you know, continue on with, with the project. The other one, um, that we have here, this was for a, um, this was just a, uh, there was work that we had to do to, uh, to basically, um, uh, work performed on an unknown utility at the limits of a pipe run, number 60. Now, look, this, this traces back to, if you have a set of plans, it's like number 60, number 61, number 62, number 63. Everywhere you either have a section of pipe or a drainage infrastructure or something you have to do, so that, that's what this all like ties back to. Um, but, you know, the, uh, this was an extra, you know, amount that had to be added on the project based on, you know, again, the conditions underground. Um, you know, I mean, Tommy, you know, Tommy could certainly, you know, I mean, this is, you know, we are running in the stock. It's just, right, Tim? I mean, you know, so, there's, there's gonna be, in fact, like, one of the next things that's gonna come is that, you know, there's a, there's a boulder, a massive boulder that's in our path that we're gonna have to get out of the way, and, um, obviously, we didn't know that there was a massive boulder in the way of the pipe run, and so, there'll probably be a change order tied to a massive boulder that's the size of a shed that's in between two structures, you know, a house and a shed, that are gonna have to be moved. You know, like the boulder, so I'm, I'm, I'm just saying like...
A ton of boulder.
Yeah, sorry, part, well, we think it's just part of the boulder, so, but anyway, like, you know, like that was identified at the construction meeting today. Right? So, I'm just, I'm just saying, like, there's gonna be change orders throughout the process. Um, so, um, that's...
The good thing, though, so just based with some of the change orders, is that we actually are working very diligently, uh, to, to really double check and triple check the plans and the surveying and step up all the infrastructure that's in the ground. At one point in time, we thought we were gonna have to move like almost 300 feet of 16,000, but we were able to make adjustments on paper through the engineers to stop that change work order, which would have been in the hundreds of thousands of dollars, maybe a quarter million if not more. Uh, and so, by, by just moving the drainage pipe over to, uh, line, this could be discontinued. So, it's not just these change workers coming up and saying, yeah, we have to do that, but actually like, really like, getting down to the meat and potatoes of the plans and ensuring that, does it really have to be done? Is there any way out of this? You know, because we wanna try to do this effectively, efficiently, and as cost, uh, effective as possible.
Yeah, I mean, I'll, I'll say that the engineering firm's been pretty...
Change workers, yeah.
The engineering firm's been really, you know, go with this so far, as far as, you know, working, working through this. What I would say is that if you look at the, when you do the plans, they're paper plans based on markouts. Um, you don't have a set of plans that, you know, reflects the conditions underground, so you only really learn about what's underground when you start digging, and so, you know, I would expect that we're gonna just continue to encounter stuff, because in some cases, like, you know, utility calls something out, it's on the set of plans that we planned for, and then you go and you dig, and you're like, oh, why? It's not here.
It's not there.
And then you go and you gotta do two or three more markouts, or you gotta do a test pit to find it, so it's just, I mean, that, that's just what's been, been happening. But I will say, we have these weekly construction meetings, we're working very diligently, and we're working very, and I think we have a really good contractor that's from Cornwall that, you know, wants to do a good job, so, you know, I think, I think it's been, it's been good. Um, but, and then last here, um, this, this is just something that sort of came up, uh, you know, and I'm, I'm not sure if this is, so, there is the possibility, um, that, you know, the median in between the bridge, right, that they have, right, we're gonna walk through? So the plans right now call for two bollards that are gonna be lighted up, but they're like two protective bollards that are gonna be on either side of the path that's gonna go through the, you know, through the median and the middle of the bridge. So, I, I've had some business owners on Main Street, I've had some others that have basically said, hey, wouldn't it be nice if, um, we could put a clock in the middle there, like, you know, there's, you go elsewhere, like in Jersey and in New York and elsewhere, and there's, and you, you know, and you have like a clock in the middle, like a four-sided clock. So, you know, we started looking into this a little bit, and basically, um, you know, in terms of, the county is able to accommodate, at least sort of leaving the ability if we wanna do it in the future. So, what they would do is, they would basically make sure that we have the electrical, and we would have like any, you know, sort of like base that we would need to have. Um, and so basically, two of the, um, potential clocks that we're looking at here, um, we just sort of, there's like a large and small version of this.
How would that affect like plowing?
Well, that's, that's...
And just like, I'm not trying to be a killjoy...
The whole island is gonna get obliterated at this point. I said that before the construction started, but if you see how much width is between those two curves, and you realize a wing truck with a plow...
Yep.
On the front of it, it's gonna be obliterated as well.
I like that.
I'm just telling you.
But I have to say, if we were timing, might as soon...
I think we need to dig into it a little bit, if I don't wanna see, I don't wanna see it get knocked down during plowing or...
Well, I think, I think Tommy, um, what we need to do, and, you know, before Friday, is basically, I mean, obviously, look, raise this with the county, I mean, they didn't seem to, they know what we have, right?
Yeah, they, they moved the median in, I think, like 18 inches, or something like that, to give us a little bit more space, but...
There's gonna be...
We also have a crosswalk there, don't we?
Mm-hmm, yep.
There's gonna be bollards there, I mean, like, they have to have lighted bollards in the middle, which they're gonna have, which I think are gonna be even closer to the edge than...
I'm just saying.
Than where the clock would be. So basically, anyway, so...
Okay.
There, there is the possibility that, that they're going to make it future-ready to be able to do this. Um, and then if they end up making it future-ready, um, we do have the ability to, to do this. So, I mean, I'm, I'm, I'm just raising this now, because I'm, I'm gonna decide by Friday if I'm gonna ask them to make it future-ready or not. But, you know, I mean, basically, the county would, you know, they would put it in, and then if we ever get to the point where we wanna put, you know, any, you know, like a light, or a, or a clock, or whatever, but if you don't put it in now, we're never gonna be able to put, you know, unless we go in and bust up the concrete and bust up the whole median.
Yeah, for example, and not took...
You gotta, like, they're already doing it for the two lighted bollards, so like, why not just, you know, have the capability if we ever decide to put something in the middle? I mean, I, I don't think that's a, but, so anyway, just...
I just think we have to look at all the angles, because I would hate to see...
Yeah, I mean, look, we have until...
That's all.
Yeah, well, we have, well, we have until, this isn't gonna be a, we can like take like, like we have until like...
Thursday.
Yeah, Thursday, basically, so, so, yeah, so if we're gonna...
Yeah.
If they're gonna put like, yeah, I mean, I'm gonna probably just go ahead and tell them to put the electric in. I mean, they're paying for it, so why not?
Well, they need the, they need the actual...
Yeah.
Structure of the clock, so they know how big to leave the concrete down.
Yeah.
I like the idea, but, you know, I've talked to Tom about this, in a sense, the biggest percentage, you know, undue damage to the clock, you know, from a plow and accident during any storm, you know? I mean, that's, that you said, uh, to be there, they're gonna protect that clock, it's probably not gonna, when that, when that...
So, so Sean actually raised this idea of like, you know, building up a little bit of, instead of having it like flush on the ground, building it up a little bit, um, so like having it...
A pedestal.
Having it come up on a pedestal a little bit, so it's actually raised in this way, if a car, if a car was to, you know, to hit it, it would hit the base and not the lamp.
And may I ask, what is the, I mean, what is the main purpose of having a clock there? I mean, people are gonna be driving, uh, it's really not a, uh...
It's, it's the core.
Not a place for people to walk.
I think it's a good point, but you're still...
I mean, I love the clock, don't you mean?
I mean, look, I mean, you know, the, uh, the Main Street Advisory Committee is getting together to discuss this.
I understand.
Main Street, uh, the...
Yes.
Yeah, that's, I'm on the liaison day, I have tomorrow night. I mean, I like, I like the idea of having a clock on Main Street, but I think it's, uh...
Just keep in the back of your minds, we're gonna be doing the triangle park, so if we can't wedge it into the, the median, we always have the triangle park.
And just...
What about flowers? We can't put any...
No, they won't let us put flowers, they said it's like a sightline issue.
Initially, they wanted, there was, uh, I've asked, you know, how like in the village they have, um, they, they, no, they were so busy, so that... No, I think that might be the triangle park.
Will we find another, uh, town that had this on that triangle? See if this works?
Yeah, here, I'll tell you where to go.
I think Hamptonburg has one, it's very similar.
Yeah.
Holland has one, I know that.
Yeah, but is it in the middle of like...
Oh, the train, railroad track crossing there.
Yeah, there's one in Spring Lake, New Jersey, there's a clock tower, um, I know that...
That's right, one.
A, AJ, you know, Anthony from Prema sent that one to me.
Cold Spring has one, I suppose.
I think Cold Spring has one, yeah.
I'd like to talk, tell me if you pay for it.
He wants to pay for it.
Oh, good. We'll see about that.
So anyway, yeah, look, so, I mean, look, we're gonna, we're gonna talk offline, but the thing is, I mean, yeah, no, you, you, you can, yeah, yeah, so, um...
You'll just want that?
Yeah, reach out to me offline, I mean, again, this, you know, the, the county is, uh, you know, they're willing to, to do it out there.
My perspective is just not, it's to get there and show them.
No, I mean, if, you know, a, a car could crash into the median like tomorrow with or without the clock.
Again, we're just talking, you know, we don't want to have some feedback, that's what you're asking us.
No, I, I, I understand, it's, it's a very last minute...
Right, it really is a last minute...
Thing, well, yeah, 'cause it was brought to me like last minute, but, but we're only gonna build a $6 million bridge once and all that, so I guess we'll change...
I understand that, I, I wanna know that.
Yeah.
It's definitely a beautiful accessory, no doubt, um, accessory, that's a, that's a good word for it, yeah, it is, I mean...
So, I guess the way I, I, you know, sort of look at it is, if, if, you know, it's decided to do this, there is, you know, part of the Cornwall Connector Trail, um, there's money for beautification on Main Street, public art, stuff like this, et cetera, so I guess that's how I would sort of envision paying for it.
I would see what the, um, group says tomorrow by...
Yeah, we, we are, um, we're getting, uh, quotes to see what it, to see what it costs, so, I mean, we've taken it as far as I think you go until I get the quotes and until a couple more discussions with the county engineer.
Yeah, no, no, no.
Tom, I have a question.
Yes.
Do you know where the, um, lights poles are gonna be on the bridge? Do you have any idea of what style they are?
Yeah, we have, they're in the plains, they're like black wrought iron kind of looking...
They look on a...
They're the same ones that are gonna be in the, yep.
Yeah, all right. Just wanna...
They have flower...
Pick it out.
Flower basket hooks on them.
Okay, good. Well, at least they go together.
They're the same in the median as well, sunlight.
Yeah.
All right, so let's move on to, uh, public comments before we get to the special meeting? No? No? Okay. All right, so first we have the resolution to Windsor EMS contract schedule of fees. Whereas the town of Cornwall has entered into a contract with the New Windsor Volunteer Ambulance for provision of emergency medical services EMS in the town of Cornwall, whereas it is necessary for the town of Cornwall to approve the charges for the EMS on the contract, whereas the town board has before it a proposed schedule of fees for the new contract term. Now therefore, be resolved as follows. One, that the town board hereby approves the annex schedule of fees for the new contract term between the town and New Windsor EMS, and two, the town board authorizes the supervisor to execute on behalf of the town. Any documents necessary for the schedule of fees, now you have motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. McCarthy?
Yes.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Edelman Reyes?
Abstain.
Ms. Michaelotti?
Yes.
Mr. Wojciechowski?
Yes. Okay, so next up, um, I have a deadline of next, um, Thursday to basically submit these contracts, so unless there's any major, um, you know, reservations, I mean, mind you that there's no room to really change a, a single word in any of these contracts. Um, so, I mean, if you think, even if you have them, I'm, I'm not gonna be able to make changes. So it's basically like boilerplate with the project scopes, and they basically said, you know, sign these, and then after we get these in, then you start negotiating over the, like, the budgets themselves. So, I mean, I would, I would ask that you let me, um, you know, sign these and get these in. Um, is there any questions or concerns? Tim?
No, just this one, in a four, you would discuss this one in terms of any problems from the body.
I'm just, yeah, as far as the we finding the strategy, I mean, we just looked at, well, we bonded, you know, we're running $400,000, and we bonded $350,000 for a sanitation truck, so I'm just baffled that it's that much money to, to do that, but...
It's professional services, and it's also paying for the, it's also paying for the signage, too.
Signage, signs, $100,000, $100,000 of signs. Okay. Let that, I'm just...
No, I, I got you.
I'm sharing my thoughts.
It's what signs cost?
Okay.
Um, okay, so, uh, resolution approving two New York Ford grant contracts. Whereas the town of Cornwall has received a New York Ford grant, whereas in order to secure the grant funds, it is necessary for the town to enter into contracts with New York State governing the terms and conditions for receipt and expenditure of the grant funds, and whereas the town board has before it a proposed New York Ford grant contract for improvements to Revlon Park and the Cornwall Connector Trail, and the proposed New York Ford grant contract for establishing and implementing a branding, marketing, and wayfinding strategy. Now therefore, be resolved as follows, that the town board hereby approves the two New York Ford grant contracts, two, that the supervisor is authorized to execute the said contracts, and any documents necessary to carry out the terms thereof. Do you have a motion to approve?
So...
Mr. McCarthy?
Yes.
Ms. Scott?
Abstain.
Ms. Edelman Reyes?
Abstain.
Ms. Michaelotti?
Yes.
Mr. Wojciechowski?
Yes. Next I have, um, Rec Department summer staff, can I get a motion to approve the summer staff that are listed on the two inter-office bundles from the Rec Department at the hourly...
Second.
I'm sorry, Josh.
Yeah, that's fine.
Finish. I'm sorry.
At the hourly rates.
So moved.
Second. Mr. McCarthy?
Yes.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Edelman Reyes?
Abstain.
Ms. Michaelotti?
Yes.
Mr. Wojciechowski?
Yes. Next I have a, um, can I get a motion to approve the assessor's training request? The assessor's office training request?
Is that on there?
Yeah.
So moved. So you said, you said, right?
Yeah, the assessor, yeah, I get a motion to approve.
I said so moved, so moved. So when you decide.
Second. I'm sorry. Mr. McCarthy?
Yes.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Edelman Reyes?
Abstain.
Ms. Michaelotti?
Yes.
Mr. Wojciechowski?
Yes. Um, next, can I get a motion to, to waive the, uh, 30-day public notice on the liquor license request?
So...
I mean, we don't, it's up to you, we don't have to, I mean, um...
Now, it's left in there, I just, you know, I'll put my, all right. So moved.
Do it second.
I'll second you.
Mr. McCarthy?
No.
Ms. Scott?
I'll say yes.
Ms. Edelman Reyes? Ms. Michaelotti?
Yes.
Mr. Wojciechowski?
Yes. Okay, um, all right, so then we've had, um, warrant number six, I have a motion to approve warrant number six.
So moved.
Second. Mr. McCarthy?
Yes.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Edelman Reyes?
Abstain.
Ms. Michaelotti?
Uh, yes.
Mr. Wojciechowski?
Yes. All right, public comment? No? Okay. Um, if I could get a motion to go into executive session to review the proposed PVA contract that in the way it's discussed, medical, financial, predator, employment history of particular employees, and seek the advice of counsel?
So moved.
Second. Mr. McCarthy?
Yes.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Edelman Reyes?
Abstain.
Ms. Michaelotti?
Yes.
Mr. Wojciechowski?
Yes.